Uh, first say welcome, welcome to our community, welcome to our parents, our students, our stakeholders, our honor reasons tonight, our staff who are doing an excellent job and we would kind of school just for that direction. As always, wanna uh thank the board for absolutely serving with, serving with you, we have still professional purpose employees, and by my count, we have a forum with uh the only directors missing are Director DeMore and Director Edwards. So again, I wanna say welcome, welcome, welcome. Do we have any uh, do we have Zoom man tonight? Do we have a Zoom man?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I didn't, I didn't see you. Say hello to all our uh alumni, uh and all of our stakeholders who will support us at this time. We have established a forum. We're gonna call this meeting to order on two thirty first, two thirty four, and six thirty A.M. We're gonna stand for a moment of silence and deny this moment of silence. We're standing for our, our, our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our community, and even our politicians. It is, it is political season. This is also the first day of early voting, so please exercise your right to vote. After we stand for a moment of silence, we're gonna have a play of the leaders, and then we're gonna go into special recognition. So please stand with me now in the moment of silence. Thank you. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carlock, the way to help with this special recognition. So as you know, we recognize our students, faculty, and community that show their stripes, and so we have a, we have a long list of support and fun things to talk about today, so let Mr. Carlock start us.
Alright, so we're recognizing some of our readers in the district. Um, so this reader, reading the most books for K one first grade at James Matthew Elementary School for the first quarter. Kalisha Smith. Kalisha, come on up, Kalisha, not here, okay, alright. Renaria Holmes, same thing, reading the most books for kindergarten through first grade, but this student is from Southwood Elementary School. Alright, they're enjoying their day off today. Jonathan Hillier, reading the most books for K through first grade, third quarter. Come on up. Driving in person. Here he is. Our next wonderful reader comes from Broadmore, Peyton Kennedy, reading the most books K through first grade. Alright, um Kylie Glover, reading the most books second through third grade, Broadmore Elementary School. Edward Arnold, reading the most books second through third grade, James Matthews Elementary School. Alright, still proud of you even though you're not here. Okay, Courtland, Courtland Reed, reading the most books second through third grade, Southwood Elementary School. The Ron Price, reading the most books second through third grade, thirty fourth Elementary School. Also from thirty fourth Elementary School, we have Riker Harmon, fourth through sixth grade, reading the most books. Brooklyn Dismute, reading the most books fourth through sixth grade, Broadmore Elementary School. Nasir Collier, reading the most books fourth through sixth grade, James Matthews Elementary School. Nasir, not here.
I'm sad.
Uh Paris McDowell, reading the most books fourth through sixth grade, Southwood Elementary School. Come on down, Paris. Okay, and those were our elementary school um readers. Will the elementary principals from those schools please stand if you're in the house? We have Mr. Moore, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Wilson. Alright, thank you. Navy Goldsmith, reading the most books seven through eighth grade, Pine Love Junior High School, first quarter. Brielle Oliver, reading the most books seven through eighth grade, Pine Love Junior High School. Lauren Summers, reading the most books ninth grade um academy. Angel Smith, reading the most books ninth grade academy. Calm down, Angel. Get your award on your day off. And we have the illustrious principal from Pine Love Junior High here, Ms. Harris. Alright, and now for our high school, we have Samaya Bridford, tenth through twelfth grade, reading the most books. Okay, and this is also from the high school, but not a book award, but for, these students are being recognized for receiving platinum certification by passing the highest difficulty levels of each assessment for the National Career Readiness Certification. Alright, so the first person is Amarian Tucker. Zamarian White. Keon Smith. James Ento. Devin McFadden. Okay, the great principal of Pine Love High School, is he in the house? Dr. Ronald Loren. Alright, we don't have a certificate for you today. Okay, now we wanna recognize our partners. Um, this community partner uh is with Samaritan Feet International and this past weekend, or was it a weekend ago? At least a weekend ago, uh they donated one thousand pair of athletic shoes, um not only to the school, but the leftovers are a part of the district's uh shoe closet. So uh Cal Alexander is the regional director, so we wanted to recognize him for tonight.
That was a really big event.
Oh yes, and the event wouldn't have taken place without the famous Doctor Tammy, Dr. Wilson. Will you come up? She made sure that everything was in place, lined up, so that we could not only host the celebration, but she made everyone feel comfortable in their new pair of shoes.
Thank you. I'll just say, of that event, um you know, we get these ideas and these wonderful things, and we wanna do it, and we want everything to take place, but you made it to where it was just so easy. I said, "Dr. Dr. Wilson, you wanna do this, Mr. Carlock?", and you handled it. You met with, I mean, very, several Zooms, several, several different meetings, and thank you so much for all the good with that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carlock.
Alright, thank you, thank you, for the celebration. Alright, yeah, we're gonna move on, uh the agenda to adoption of minutes. Um, that last meeting is scheduled September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, board members. When you have an opportunity to be those minutes, uh are there any questions, concerns about those minutes? And also, when you have an opportunity to welcome uh Director DeMore to our board meeting. Do you have a speaker's arm or use a teacher's? Are there any questions, concerns about September twenty fifth minutes? Gary Dunn, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty fifth. Moving private second, raise the question. Gary Dunn, all the favors say aye. Aye for me, all the polls say no. Yeah, aye, aye, thank you.
Hello? So as far as the financial report, or what you will see in your packet, and um I hope this is easier to read that way, where you have just that one document with the links on it, and so um in that, the first report that you'll see is the local revenue collection breakdown. Remember, that's the dual sheet that uh Ms. Reed has created for us to look at how our tax dollar money is coming in, and where you'll see that each month, and so we're, I'm gonna make sure we include that every month, so that you guys can keep up with our local tax, tax dollars. Um, the next document is the board report, all funds, period one through three. Didn't see anything other than just normal on our board report. Uh, also, so notice on the board report, we are less all those activities counts, but then we were able to consolidate so many of those and clean up the board report. Uh, funds uh for September is the next document. Board report for September. We have the bank reg, uh the bank reconciliation. We reconciled, we left a report, and then our check register. The la, last three board reports are about the building fund and the building project. You notice that first document is just our E-Finance document, letting you know that all the bond proceeds that are in there. Obviously, we started with the bond proceeds from last year as beginning balance, and then we've added those bond proceeds from this school year. Bond proceeds, uh the next document is the document that Ms. Reed has put together for each month, July, August, and September, of what the bond proceeds interest payment is versus what we paid out. And then the last is the total project cost, starting when we began the project, September twenty three. If you have any comments or questions.
Alright, at this time, I might entertain a motion to approve the financials presented for September twenty fourth. Approving private second, are there any questions, any discussion?
It is a continuation from last year, remember, that's the, they cleaned up all of those phone bills, and so it'll be finished out this school year.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Gary Dunn, ready to vote? All the favors say aye. Aye for me, all the polls say no. Yeah, aye, aye. Alright, moving on to board committee reports.
Um, does anyone, I know that we haven't had a chance to meet with all the committees this board, this last month. I know that uh Dr. Cohen has some funny, uh some facilities updates, um anything, anyone else? Financials, and then what else we got?
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna start with uh?
If they want to.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm speaking for the uh Facilities Committee and just give you an update on the progress we made so far. First, uh glad to say we closed on the downtown building, remember, we was looking at selling that building, I think we closed on that building. Uh, we're also looking at uh getting bids for HVAC for the uh James Matthews Gym, also Jack Roadbury. Uh, we have the units for the uh gym, but we're looking at getting those installed, so we're looking at getting uh quotes for that. And uh last but not least, we'll have uh East Harding speak to us on uh progress of the hospital.
So I'm Clayton Bagman with Lewis Architects, uh members of board, and Dr. Barbary, thank you for letting us both be here. I just wanted to quickly give a brief overview, and obviously Sean's got some exciting things to show y'all. I would say to this point, as a progress report, this project has run smooth. Uh, anybody's been saying prayers about uh not a lot of rain, it has worked because we've got the vast majority of that hardened drain in, and that is a blessing to have that much installed. Hopefully, we can get the whole thing done uh without a heavy rain, uh which, that's made dirt work go smooth. Uh, we've got puddings, uh some puddings in, and we're up to, we're up to gray building pad just about everywhere. But it has been a smooth project to this point, there's always some bumps along the way. Uh, East Harding has done a great job, uh uh just team, team uh effort, uh Dr. Barbary, Mr. Drag, and their team has just worked great with us, and uh hopefully, we can continue that, that smooth of a, of a progress on this project, cause it's really going well. Uh, it's changing fast out there, so we're really grateful to, to be here with this progress report, and just hopefully encourage the community and you guys that thanks him to be going smoothly.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so, second, thank you for that. I will uh just kinda from his statements there, that we are going, uh the project is going very well. Uh, I know that the dry weather's not great for everybody, but it's wonderful for construction, so we certainly, certainly are appreciative. Just to give uh everyone kind of a quick overview, uh it's getting a little harder to recognize what the site will look like originally, but I don't think we're sure of that. So, that little hole right there that you see, and this area right here, this flat spot, that's where McFadden Gym used to sit, was right there. Uh, and that hole is actually the one storm drain that we still have left on site from the original, uh the original project. That was right out in front of McFadden, in between there and the cafeteria, so that was the original lowest spot on campus. Uh, and we're still using that to help pull some of the water uh off the project. That's kind of our one low spot, as you will. You can see here, and I'll start the video in just a minute, but uh this will be the front, new front of the high school, which will face Olive Street, you see over here. Uh, and we are finalizing the last of the demo up here to the far west. That's what, little bit you see there is what's the smaller building uh of what used to be the Trice Building, so I'll get this started, we can kinda talk through as we go. Here, you can see, this kinda picks up where we left off at the demo at the end of last month's meeting, uh that's the very end of the McGeorge Building. You see coming down uh before you there, all the metal's being separated out, concrete's coming out. Again, this is the end of the, the Trice Building, uh that wall right there by the excavator is the last of the largest building to the front side, and the small building to the side. Here's pouring some footings, again, this is coming along the front of the building, uh that'll be the main entrance to the left. This is coming up towards uh around, about to go into the cafeteria along the north side. We've got most of the whole east side of the property poured as far as footings go. There's the Harding Drain. It is twelve, those pieces are twelve feet wide, ten feet tall, and about six foot deep, each one of them. You can drive your car through it. Uh, this was taken a few days ago, but we've got several hundred pieces already installed, uh the three hundred that we'll finalize with. You can see, we're already about halfway across the football field. Uh, that will continue on uh just to the west side of the football field, uh kinda where the old fieldhouse uh used to be, is where that will continue. As you're coming down here, this is kinda coming back towards the academy, and you can see the plumbing uh coming up, and that's for the, where the C.L.E. buildings are. And you can see the gravel roadbed here is the new drive, that would be the drop off right across the front of the building. A lot of that gravel, we are actually reusing from crushing concrete on site. You've seen the crushing activities going. Uh, and this is kinda coming around to the back of where the new kitchen area will be, as you can start to see some of the plumbing coming up, the Harding Drain, uh we're filling in as we're going, and you can see the few pieces there uh on the top side. Kinda back to an overview of uh progress to date. So, if you were to come on site uh in the near future, uh our masons have just mobilized, and so we're starting to see some of the CMU block below grade right now. We will get our first part of the slabs going in the end of this month, assuming everything still stays dry. And you will start to see checkerboard slabs being poured uh all through November. Masonry walls, as those slabs dry enough, will start going vertical, and we hope to start seeing some red iron going up uh in December. So we're making great progress, like I said, the dry weather is helping tremendously. Overall, we've brought in about eighty-five thousand yards of fill so far, uh and uh we're starting to level out the far west side of the site. Uh, and we'll finish up the demo with the, the little Trice Building uh probably early next month. That'll kinda get us up to potentially a stopping point for now, as far as the work goes. So we're very excited, uh the project is moving along, it is holding schedule well. Uh, we've had great communications and great relationships with Lewis Architects, and with the, with the Pine Love District, we've been able to work through many issues quickly and keep everybody moving and running on. We certainly appreciate it. Board, any questions?
Any questions?
I'll say this, Dr. Cohen, so we have um O.A.C. meetings, which is owner, architect, construction engineers. And right now, they're biweekly, so every two weeks we meet and, and look at progress and talk about different things. Um, as the project goes, we, those who will, will get, be weekly, a different, more often. But anytime that you guys are available, and would like to schedule um to do a walk, you just need to email me, and we can walk, we can do that. However, our next O.A.C. meeting is Tuesday, October twenty ninth, at ten o'clock, if any of you want to go. Come to the meeting, or wanna do a walk, we can do an onsite walk that day, just email me, let me know, but it's Tuesday, the, the twenty ninth at ten, and I can email that out to you, so remind everybody. And as you see, we give you a walk, and I sent you a picture.
Alright.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay, well, the Facilities Committee did not meet, but I did want to remind uh the board that the um seven point five policy on purchases was presented, and something that uh we should come before the board for a vote, it was excluded from the meeting, that we approved the rest of the policies. And so uh hopefully, that will, that will come before you, and the basis for that was that there would be uh one standard. Of course, there's a federal standard that you have to provide to federal procurement, uh but then, you know, I wonder there are different standards that we apply on I Q. And so if you have a universal standard to simplify things, and then you need it, and something needed to be reclassified as a federal expense, you already covered all of your uh bases for your federal procurement, so that was something I wanted to share. And tonight is my last board meeting, and the board, and remember the board, so I wanted to take this opportunity to say, uh the State Board of Education, that is the legislature number four, now the councilor, to serve, I would thank the rest of the board members for tolerating me. I was a bit down, of course. Uh, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I wish you all the best, and I will continue to support the district, and I hope to continue to support the district for the C.T.E., and the other, uh, effectively, the workforce. So, thank you.
Alright, I guess I'll do this. Uh, in terms of board governors, uh we had an opportunity to go down to a lovely audit at the Arkansas State Legislature, chaired by uh Lynn Chesterfield, who I'm familiar with, who's one of our strong supporters. Uh, but she did raise something fair, uh Superintendent and I attended that audit, and thankfully, uh many of the items that were, uh that were concerned were, did not occur during our administration, and so we had some dialogue and some conversation about uh next steps, and how we're gonna handle those things uh going forward, and I just wanna say, and I wanna thank Superintendent and her team, and that Superintendent, Janet, were helping just, they helped us to clean up some of those, those things, and we've been doing that over the last year. Trying to get us back to the point where we don't have those issues with audits. Uh, Superintendent Bryan, would you like to share more about that, I couldn't.
Yes, sure, and I put that just under my updates for uh finance, and so um for those that don't know, board, if there are a significant amount of material findings or findings in an audit that are repeat findings, those have to go before legislative audit, and we have to go sit before the committee, and they make recommendations as well. So, what happens is when we were audited for fiscal year twenty three, um and currently, right now, we're in fiscal, uh we're in fiscal year twenty five, but auditors are here, and they're auditing now fiscal year twenty four, and you don't think you're behind. So I always say, that wasn't your audit, that um we had to go before the legislative audit for. Um, two of the findings um were, and you guys saw that in the report, two of them were uh repeated findings, and then the rest were mostly things that we self-reported as a district. Uh, those are things that we knew were concerns when we came in and started working in the Finance Department, and so that was um, that was an easy thing to talk about, when we, when we were able to say, "We found this, and we, we knew it was a problem, and we reported it to you." And so the hope, and what I said to Ms. Chesterfield would be that, "We won't be back." That would be the goal, I don't wanna ever have to go back there again. And so um, but I do appreciate, uh they sent a letter to uh Superintendent, the board president, saying that they request that we both be there for that, and so I appreciate Dr. Rice for coming as part of that, and so um it, it went, it went well, and we're gonna be done with that.
Uh, the other thing I'd like to say in terms of governors, uh uh and thank you, Michelle, for sending out the information about, I think the seventy first A.S.P.A. meeting, uh board members, uh it is local, uh like you said, we're local, too, uh, so if you're interested, please get back to Michelle, in case you can schedule your arrangements uh to attend, I'll be commuting in the day, uh to that meeting, just to give you a little more flexibility to put that, but I'm looking forward to attending that, and I'm looking forward to attending the training in terms of learning how to, you know, continue to be a professional board member, so that's the only thing I have from the, from the government side, if there's any other uh issues and concerns, uh definitely make sure that you all are updated on that going forward.
Thank you.
Alright, any other board, any other committee reports? Alright, now, we're gonna move to the seat, we're gonna have the people to sit, in the booth tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
I'm Martin Golden, I am the vice chair of the classified, yeah, that's one, classified personnel policy committee. I just wanna introduce myself to you all, uh our chairperson is out uh for a few months, so I'm hoping to chair.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to policies right now, and hopefully, next month, we'll come to you to talk about some of those.
Okay, alright, thanks so much.
Alright.
I do not see you represented from certified.
Alright, I guess we'll move on to some digital.
Alright, and really quickly, before we move on to my official report, I believe we had some students come into the meeting that we wanted to recognize, and so I'd like to do that really quickly, if that's okay, cause I wanna make sure that they get that.
Princes, you might have to help me out. So we have Peyton Kennedy. Broadmore Elementary School.
Kindergarten first grade, top reader.
Daddy.
Congratulations, thank you.
How are you, well?
I'm gonna say I'll work. Um, Renaria Holmes. Renaria Huns. And she was a set up for the elementary student, top reader for kindergarten from first grade. That's my favorite color.
Thank you so much. Good job.
And that's for my student Lauren Summers from Ninth Grade Academy. We were waiting on you.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Good job. All right, for the superintendent's report, I just, as a reminder, I like to talk to you guys about the six systems and how every decision we're making as a board and in school, as our focus is on students and how those, and how those systems affect our students. And so I want to start tonight by our academics. And as you know, that the state has now finally released our Atlas summative scores. And so we haven't had a whole lot of time with the scores, but we have had some time. And so I just kind of wanted to present you a quick overview of, just, I'm calling it just a quick overview for the board. If you don't mind, thank you so much, Mr. Sims. So this is information specifically that I want everyone to be aware of that came from the State Department. So the first time ever, Arkansas has a comprehensive student progress monitoring system, kindergarten through high school. And so this is called Atlas. It was developed alongside Arkansas teachers and it's aligned to the Arkansas academic standards. This year's results, it's, it set the baseline for that. So this is the first time that they've been assessed on those specific Arkansas standards. What we're doing, what we've been encouraged to do, is take this data, reflect on our curriculum, make sure that our rigor is there, looking at all the things across the district as far as consistency and what those, what those scores are telling us about how our students performed on those standards. And then we're going to take this information, eventually, the state will take this information and still create a school letter grade. We haven't gotten much more information about the letter grade right now because of the way that everything has changed with the assessment. So we were not assigned a letter grade at this time. We were told that we would get a letter grade. And hopefully, we're going to be in meetings with people from the State Department about how that's determined because so many different factors have changed. Across the state, this is the baseline data. And so the way that the Atlas assessment is, is assessed, they have a level one, level two, level three, level four. So I'm going to go back real quick and talk to you about the levels. So if a student scored in level one, it states that they are demonstrating limited understanding of those standards. If they scored in a level two, it shows that they have a basic understanding of the standards and that they may know proficient in some of those standards, but not enough to be fully proficient. Level three says that the student does demonstrate proficient understanding and knowledge of all those standards being assessed. A level four is that they have an advanced understanding of that knowledge and they are ready to be accelerated. And so when you go back and look at the baseline, what they've said, this is the state. So in the state, across Arkansas, in ELA, which is the like, the reading test, students scored at a twenty-six percent, we had twenty-six percent of our students that were in level one, thirty-nine point six nine percent of our students in level two, twenty-three percent in level three, ten percent in level four. In math, those numbers were thirty-five percent in level one, thirty-one percent in level two, twenty-one in three, eleven in four. And then you have the science scores as well. I will be very specific and say, this was again, the first time we've gone back, and I say gone back to, in the past, we used to give what they called an end-of-course exam. We went away from doing the end-of-course exam and now we're back to that. So in math, you have an end-of-course algebra and of course geometry. Across the state, those, the geometry scores were pretty dismal. And so some of the reflections that the teachers that were on that committee, there was hundreds of teachers on this committee that was looking at cut scores and looking at questions and things like that. And the teachers that were part of that committee said, well, we have been, I mean, this is what we were told. I wasn't in that committee, but they said things like, you know, in geometry, we were, even though we knew we were teaching geometry, we were still planning for the ACT aspire, which means the student had to know all realms of mathematics for that grade. And so we now can go back to focusing specifically on just geometry standards. And so with that being our baseline this year, we're really hoping that we can focus more on those geometry standards and do a better job next year. But geometry, algebra, physical science, geometry, algebra and biology were the end-of-course exams that we have. So this was the state. So then we talked about the levels, level one, level two, level three, and level four. So here are our district-wide results of the three subjects. So if you look, the first one on the top left is science and it's just the way the report presented. So in our district, we had, and I have to pull it up here so I can see it. I can't read it from here. But what you see in the orange is level one, the light green is level two, the dark green is level three, and the blue is level four. So I would like to share that we are not, we were told not to compare proficiency levels that what we saw on the ACT aspire versus what we see on the Atlas. But the positive that we see is that, you know, the level one, the level two and three, those are students that are, that do have knowledge of our standards. And so when you look at our ELA scores, we still have almost over half of our students. We're going to celebrate that positive. If you look at it by breakdown by grade level, this is your ELA summative by grade level. And we did have grades, if you look at fifth and sixth grade, that scored less. I mean, there were less students in level one than the rest of the levels. The next line would be our math scores and that's where you'll see, I'll bring your attention to geometry. Our geometry assessment was not very positive. It definitely mirrored what happened across the state. And then the next, you have our science, which I was pleased with our science in, in ways as far as we still had students with a basic knowledge. Now we need, I mean, with the, I'm sorry, with a, a basic knowledge, we're just like looking to push those. So in our training, one of the things that they said was that if students are in level two, it can be a reflection that they are getting the standards. They're just not going deep enough, the depth of knowledge of being able to apply those standards. They said a difference in a level two and a level three would be the application of their knowledge. If they were a three, they were applying the knowledge and they could answer those questions better. If they were a two, they had a basic understanding, but not a depth of understanding. What I want to share next is something that we brought before you a lot last year. So remember in the board meetings when we talked about our district CFAs, DCFA's and Ms. Rawls and we presented on things like that? So when we provided those district CFAs last year, those were the assessments that we were giving our students that were only based on Arkansas standards. We were trying to see if we could prepare them and assess the, our students with the standards that they had been teaching, which we call the priority standards. And so if you look at this data, and I'll try to, there's a lot. Mrs. Rawls created this, but it's very interesting. I'm just going to talk about third grade. So at the top, what you see is third grade. And if you look at our DCFA, I'm just top left, the top left data right there. In our district CFA, in quarter four, the overall, this is just overall in ELA, we had eighty-five percent of our students scored in limited understanding. That was on our test that we gave. We had ten percent scored basic, four percent in proficient and one percent in advanced. Now, the discrepancy that you will see is that on our district CFA in third grade, in quarter four, we tested a hundred and eighty-five students. If you look to the right, on the right side of that, we actually tested two-hundred-and-forty-four students on the Atlas. So we tested more students on the Atlas test, which of course is good. But we need to be testing that many in our DCFA as well. But if you look at the top right quadrant right there where it says Atlas and it's got limited basic proficient, we had fifty-six percent of our students overall score limited understanding on ELA. Thirty-six in basic, six in proficient and two in advanced. If our DCFA's are showing, predicting closely to what the students possibly could score. And to go a little bit deeper, in reading fundamentals and vocabulary, that was one of our priority standards and that was a standard that was assessed on the Atlas assessment. If you look in third grade, on the district CFA, we had one percent score above mastery. We had thirty-eight percent that were at or near mastery. We had sixty-one percent that was below mastery. If you go to the assess, the actual Atlas assessment, those correlate very closely. So we're going to take this and we, and we pulled the same thing for fifth grade as well. The same, the same priority standard and the same overall, just so that you could see. And the reason why we chose third and fifth grade to show you guys tonight is because those were the two grade levels that we, we tested the most in the DCFA, just to see the correlation. And so I thought this was really good data on our part as a baseline because we can take this now and say, first of all, giving the DCFA is very important. We need to continue to do that. Second of all, it looks as if our district test that we're giving the students is just as rigorous and on the same line of standard as what they're going to be assessing the Atlas. And so if we know we're teaching those standards and we know what those questions look like and we're preparing them for that, then it should result in a stronger understanding of those standards and that type of rigorous question. So what I want to do with this data now with our district team is meet with principals and talk about the importance of those standards and teaching those and then utilizing that district CFA as well. That's one, another piece of data that we're bringing into this. But quick notes, I will say this. So you know how the original bullet said that this assessment will provide a kindergarten test all the way up to high school? So if we were, if we gave the K-three screeners this school year and those screener results just came in last Thursday, we do have the results. We have not had enough time to really dig into the results. Those results are going to be utilized for this school year to plan for students needing independent reading plans and also independent math plans. So if a student scored in a level one on the summative assessment, then we have to make sure that they have an independent reading plan in math. If they score in a level one or at risk on the screener data, we have to make sure that they have a plan. And the good thing is, is most of them already do have plans. We already have most students in those interventions that need to be there because we began giving screener assessment data the beginning of school because we knew we needed to make sure that we were providing those interventions. This is just another piece of data that goes a little bit deeper that, that we'll be able to utilize and be more specific to those specific L A interventions. And then we also will be providing this, we have not put this on our Facebook page yet, but it will be coming out. I wanted to let you guys know. The state sent out a parent resource document. On this document, there are lots of links to help our parents to understand the scores. And I will say this, the way that this works now is every parent has access to log in to their student's account and see their child's scores. And it does have a pretty good tutorial explaining what those scores mean. The parent will get, they have to use the student's name, first and last name, birthday, and they get a code from the district. And so our district testing coordinator, Ms. Lee, and our billing testing coordinators are creating those documents, those tickets is what we'll call, to send home to parents if parents request them. And we also, we email them to them at a parent's request. And so we just didn't want to pass that out because it did have those student information on there. It has their birthday and their, and all the information and it gets private. So we want to make sure that parents are requesting those. So we'll send a note home from the schools saying if you would like your child's, here's what your child's score will tell you. If you would like your child's code, please contact your child's teacher and we'll get that out to you. But we'll also send home and post different parent resources.
I have a question about the test. Is this a paper test or is this a computer test?
Computer test. And they have to type. It has a writing portion this year. One of the first things that were very noticeable in our data is our students scored poorly in writing, for sure. That really affected some of our ELA scores. I mean, that was just very obvious that that affected ELA scores, our writing. So that was something we've already discussed.
So when they do the actual testing, do all computers, all the students, you know, computers at the same time and then they're timed and then they get off? How does it work?
Yes, and actually, this test doesn't have necessarily a time limit. They have up to all day to take it. Once they start the testing, they can take it as long as they do it within that school day. Just even that one section. Used to, you only had like sixty minutes to do reading or thirty minutes to do math. Now, if they do the ELA, when they log in that day, they do have as long as they can on that day to complete that task. But it is online and we do have them all in the same room unless there's a specific type of accommodations that we pull them out for.
What grade do they do keyboard?
Well, it's not required. The transition plan starts for fifth grade. So we start Tools for Learning is what we call it at the elementary school. But keyboarding itself is not really required until seventh grade.
So are they taking exams that they have to type?
Yes, our, our, our DCFA, they do have to. But I don't necessarily know if we're, we're not doing a writing prompt on that. And so that's something that we could look into for sure. They do not type it. I mean, they just answer the questions like an open response type thing and multiple choice. But they do not do an actual writing prompt in that. And I think that's something we need to look at. Score. Any questions about the Atlas data? The rest is just an update in academics. We're still participating in Mordurum and Classroom, our PLC project, and that's something that we continue to move forward with. We discussed the legislative audit that we attended. School board election day is November the fifth. And I wanted to talk to you about the board training opportunities. Board, there was, they call it a regional training that was going to be hosted in Pohen and it's this week. And it was hard for everybody to get that on their calendar, plus it's out of town, even though it's considered regional. So I emailed our co-op director and this was something she already kind of had going. And so the other superintendents in the area also agreed. So we are going to host that same board training that you can earn those three hours at our actual co-op here. And that date is December the third. I'll give you some more information about that so you can register if you would like. It'll be at our Arkansas River Co-op. Our buses are here. We got all our new buses. So we have a beautiful fleet right now of ten passenger buses that were, some were sixty-five and some were seventy-one. We also have two new fifteen passenger buses. So we are continually to update our fleet. We actually run twenty-five bus routes. And so this is helping us get our route buses. I'm so excited that a student can enter the bus that smells so nice and new. And then we are, Mr. Dr. Cohen talked about soliciting the quotes for James Matthews and Jack Robey. Under human capital, this month is National Principals Month and we are very pleased with our principals and the artwork that they do. We thank them for all the things that they're doing. And I would like to recognize our principals for National Principals Month. We've had a lot of professional development this month. We had a group of administrators and teachers go to Atlanta to work, coincide other people for Educational Epiphany. You know, our STAR grants that we, our STAR program that we have at Ninth Grade Academy. We had our teachers attend another training for that in New Orleans to see another school and visit with other educators that are part of that program. And we're working on our high-quality instructional materials. We have kids first, actually on- We have Kids First actually onsite going through HQIM with our teachers. And then there's an opportunity that we are going to participate in. It's an apprenticeship pathway for parent professionals to obtain a special education licensure. It's new that the department has put out, and it's something that we're, I said department, Department of Education. And so, we're working with that as a pilot program. I think we have three teachers, three parent professionals that actually work for us at this time that could qualify for this. And so it's just in the beginnings right now, but we're looking to do that. Under student support, we're excited to announce we're going to have an ACT Boot Camp this week. It's this Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00. It's going to be a focus, reading and science focus. We have free food, free transportation for all students, and I think we had over 65 students sign up so far. And so, thank you, Ms. Rawls, for making that happen too. She's working with Ms. Matty Collins and all that to take care of that, so we're excited. We have, we were granted more safety grant money from the State Department. They had another group of grant money go out. And so, we applied for it. And so, we will begin updating all of our doors, our locks, our classroom locks, making sure that everyone has a key. We're looking at different, so those may be some quotes that you can, be coming before you soon. I'm hoping to do a keyless entry, if it's affordable, to do like the keyoffs with this grant. And then, also, the shoe closet. We have, gosh, almost over 500 pair of shoes that we'll be able to use, students will be able to receive. As far as state owner communication, every campus participating in Grandparents' Day, we have a lot of great grandparents come out and support our students. And we had a really great showing for the Good Samaritan Shoe Giveaway.
Any questions, Congress, or Senator Martin?
Do you have anything?
Okay, I have a quick question. Took me a while to get my question together. But the first question is, does the Atlas align with the students regularly? Like what they do in class, what they learn in class, it does?
It should, absolutely. The Atlas is, so we teach Arkansas State standards and we pick those priority standards from Arkansas State standards. The regular resources are just resources that we use to teach those standards.
Second question, do the scores from the Atlas reflect how the students typically score through school year grade lines? Like if they're A B students, are they doing well on Atlas, Atlas students average?
I have not compared actual classroom grades.
Is it a way to?
Sure. I think it would be very easy to do, based on, now, what you would see, you would have to look at a reflection of, because what we have now, our third graders are now fourth graders. So you would look back to see those third graders that were level one versus two versus three versus four, how did they, were their report cards or how were their grades in third grade? You could do that. That would be a correlation. I think the, and I would look even further though to see how did they score on their classroom formative assessments and their district formative assessments. I think that, I mean, I know looking at that specifically. I hadn't thought about actual classroom grades though. Good, thank you.
All right, this time we can move on to the business.
So the first thing that you have for new business is the Policy 5.7. I provided it to you last board meeting. It was something that, there was new legislation and it's about media selection of library media center materials. So if someone, how do we select the materials? And then, if someone would like to challenge a material, what is our policy for that? So we had a policy in place, however, the, based on legislation, ASBA updated that policy just to add some more wording. So what you have in your packet is the new changes that were highlighted based on ASBA's recommendations. And so, I would ask that you adopt this 5.7 ASBA policy.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the updated policy 5.7. Move private second, ready for question and discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
And so, the next item on your agenda is our purchases. And so, under the purchases, we have the property insurance. If you remember, we've already done vehicle insurance and we were waiting to, we had submitted changes to the property insurance to the insurance company. And so, but the way that this document reads, we will, since this property was done last year, the way that this is, we will have to receive credits for it. So I need you guys to approve the property insurance less, and I put an email in there. It's going to be less around $76,000.
All right, this time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the property insurance. The move private second, ready for question? Any concerns?
So, you know, this is likely this to replace the cost of our buildings. Is it believable, like this is in line with the amount of coverage that we would need if something happened to our buildings?
Yes, and the reason why I know that is because there's been a lot of adjustment to this because of recent issues with other districts across the state. Wen, being an example, Wen had just built a brand new school and it was destroyed by the tornado. So our property values actually, our premiums across the state have all gone up because it has to be replaced. And so, I will say that other districts, you know, as superintendents, we have monthly Zooms and we talk about different things. And so, other districts are seeking, as well as we will be, just to see if there would be a better premium that we could get from somewhere else. But at this time, this is still the most consistent one we can get. I know that there's a big push for us to continue to work to get better premiums. This one looks a little higher than last year because last year, remember, we were able to, when the governor had an excess of money, they gave us an opportunity to take a 20%. They paid 20% of our premium last year. And we've asked for that again this year as districts across the state, and they have not provided that. So we're going to have to pay this premium without that reduction from the state.
And, so you're saying that they're going to give us a credit for the buildings that we no longer have?
Yes, that's the ones covered by, yes, the demo.
Okay, but we also have other buildings that they weren't covered for?
They were, but they weren't, yes, and they're coming off. But the replacement for them, the only one that we had to, we were still having to pay a specific fee was the one downtown. Now, we were paying a premium on Oak Park and Indian Street, and those are coming off as well.
Any questions, Congress, or concerns? All right, so move private second, we've had a discussion, we're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
This was something that Mr. Sims, we continue to use. We did seek more than one bid for this virus. This is a three-year commitment for this antivirus, and it was the best deal that we could get based on the cybersecurity that we needed. We will be paying for it out of federal funds.
All right, this time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the district antivirus cybersecurity. Move private second, ready for question? Any none? All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
And personnel, we, there are two actions, or there are two items to be, for hiring on the personnel action chart. I don't need to go into executive session unless you would like to.
All right, let's close the board. All right, this time I'd like to ask.
Well, we hire, have a classified hire, a social worker. We've had two social workers resign this school year, moving, one moved and one took a job that he's always wanted, which I'm very happy for him. And that's come before you. So this is a licensed social worker. We're only going to replace one. We're not replacing both at this time, just for financial concerns. But we know we have a need for that, so we're going to replace the one. And the other hire is a special education teacher. She's retired. And she has agreed to come back to teach Special Ed 3/4. And so, we're happy to have her later, and so that's the two hires that we have on board.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve personnel hires as presented. Senator Martin? Move private second, ready for question, any discussion?
I have a question. So how many of these social workers will we have on staff?
Six.
Six, yes. And how many is there?
We used to have one in a school, one at each school.
Two will be serving one, I mean, one will be serving two campuses, I prepaid, probably one.
I didn't know which two schools up here.
Any other questions, Congress, or concerns? All right, any none? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. It's aye for me. All opposed say no. The ayes have. Thank you very much. All right, this time we are ready for a jury. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Private second, ready for question? Any none? All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have. And I also want to say this time, too, thank you for coming out, the staff that come with us. We're a little early tonight, so professional purpose involved.